I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the July 31st, 2018, at 6:00 PM, Laverne Planning Commission meeting. We do have a quorum to seek the approval of the June 26th, 2018, regular meeting minutes.
Make a motion to accept or submit it.
Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Meeting is passed. Meeting minutes passed. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney for an election of chair for the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Garvin. I will relinquish your duties. Thank you for serving faithfully over the last year in your position as chairman.
Thank you, sir.
With that said, I'll open up the floor for nominations for chairman of the Laverne Planning Commission for the next year or until we have a next election. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. Garvin.
Mr. Garvin's been nominated. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of Mr. Garvin becoming chairman once again, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, congratulations. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, everybody. At this time, we'll take a nomination for vice chair of the Laverne Planning Commission. Do we have any nominations?
No. I'll nominate Jim.
Nomination for Mr. Jim Anderson.
James.
James Anderson. Thank you, ma'am.
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
That man.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Jim, who has been re-elected as vice chair. And lastly, we will be electing the secretary of Laverne Planning Commission. Is that correct?
It is.
Open floor for nominations.
Nominate Graham.
We have a nomination and a second for Mr. Graham Coats as the secretary of Laverne Planning Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Mr. Graham Coats will continue to be our secretary. Thank you both for your service and thank everyone for their service to the community. Now, on to business. Our first item under old business is deferred, so we'll be moving on to new business. New business. Final plat Mason Road Business Center Lot 4, requested by Kimley Horn, property located on Mason Road, tax map 017, parcel 11, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by Mason Road Holdings East LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for the final plat of property along Mason Road. Many of you know this is a part of the larger business center that Panatoni is developing in this area. And this plat is for, in particular, two lots, which is Lot 4 and Lot 6. And Lot 4 is roughly 27 acres and then Lot 6 is about 41.7 acres. And last time they were here at the workshop, there was only a few comments, and they had to do with the extension of public utilities, public sewer. And they did remove those notes from the plat. And then they did make the appropriate changes to the easement and relabeled those. You can see, a lot of you all have seen the work going on out there and know that that road's been closed for a while. And the old alignment is the darker line here that sort of snakes around. And the new layout will have a softer curve and then connect here to Bain, the existing Bain Drive as it is today. And by the way, lots 1, 2, and 3 were approved at the planning commission back in January of this year, so this whole site continues to develop. And so we have 4 and 6 in front of us tonight. And I think all the other comments, unless Mr. Leach has something, everything's been addressed on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. So there are no technical items, correct?
That is correct. There are no technical items.
Very good. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I don't know, Congressman General. Make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Site plan requested by Kimley Horn for Mason Road Business Park, Building 4, property located on Mason Road, tax map 017, parcel 11, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by Mason Road Holdings East LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. Also, part of this Mason Road business development is this site plan request. And if approved, this site plan includes a building that is 322,000 square feet, almost 323,000 square feet. And this is the building furthest to the east. So again, here's lots 1, 2, and 3 that were approved back in January. So this building includes 299 car parks. And it is, as I said, 322,000 square feet. And the sidewalks for this entire development were discussed and worked out back in January and the months leading up to January. So the sidewalks have laid out, have been laid out, and they do comply with the city ordinance for those. And I think the only thing worth mentioning is they had a few, very few, technical items at the workshop, and those have all been addressed. So there are none remaining, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman. The applicant, please.
Will the applicant please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Chairman. Brendan Bowles, Kimley Horn Associates, 214, Ocean Side Drive.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coats?
We discussed the workshop, the entranceway.
Yes, sir.
And it appears that for the drawings you applied, you haven't changed that. You haven't changed that?
Yes, sir. So we did go back and take a look at the traffic study that was done for the overall project, and the right-hand turn lane did not meet any traffic warrants. We did make some improvements to the radius of the drive, so we increased the radius for the right-hand turn lane and made sure we had good width there at the receiving lane, which is 20-foot wide at the receiving lane. The overall pavement width of Mason Road is roughly 38 feet. So we did not add the turn lane, as you've pointed out, but we have made some improvements to better facilitate the trucks turning right there.
You do have the property at the entranceway to widen it, though, correct? I mean, I understand the turn lane. I understand that. But you can add two more buildings to this property at the end of the day, correct?
Yes, so there's roughly 500,000 square feet left to be built out on the east side, but the road does not continue on further east beyond that.
But then, for the residents coming through Mason Road, stuck behind tractor trailers that can get off the road a bit quicker just by widening, I mean, I understand the turn lane, I understand that, but it's just, I see your design here of the turning lane, I mean, turning for the tractor trailer in there, it's just with the addition of 500,000 square feet of buildings that's going to use tractor trailers, and you have the property to make it wider. Why you didn't do it? I mean, at the moment, you're just going to give us some issues with traffic.
It becomes down to the construction. That's already been done out there. The utilities that are already in the ground, we've got to move to get them out of the way. So at the end of the day, if that's, you know, if this board and body is, that's a requirement of the plan, I think that, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to do it. But our opinion is that it's not needed based on the traffic study that's already being completed.
To be exact, when you say you have to move utilities, what you're concerned, what do you mean by utilities?
There's a gas line that's already been placed parallel to the new alignment of Mason Road, and there's storm lines that have already been put in the ground with the reconstruction of Mason Road that would have to be moved.
So...
So there's also a spill slope, you know? If you go out there today, the grading hasn't been done for that road. And so there's, there's a slope there that all that would have to be moved. So it's, it's not as simple as we have the property and just can add more pavement. It requires more infrastructure to be redone.
So the gas line is not normally underneath the road?
It's on the edge of the, it's right outside the edge of the pavement right now. So...
But it's underneath the road?
It's outside the pavement today. That's where the gas company wanted it, so we could put the turn lane on top of the gas line.
I'm not speaking about the turn lane. I'm just asking the question, is the gas line underneath the road?
Today, no.
It's not?
No.
Above the road?
It's beside...
You lose me here.
It's not under the pavement, Secretary Coats. It's just outside the pavement. So I'll put the turn lane, then it'll be on top of it.
So to take the present entrance, forget the turning lane. I understand the turn lane, but you could widen it at the entrance there to make it more easier for tractor trailers to get around that corner. At the moment, I mean, I understand by your computer drawing here that it's going to work, but in reality, they're going to swing into the driving of the road, people trying to get off the property. And so my question is, why can we not widen the entranceway?
It's a 20-feet now for the receiving lane. We could take it to 22-feet if that would...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, please.
They did widen from their original plan. They originally had a 40-foot mouth, is the semi-technical term for a driveway entrance. They went to a 50-foot, which is what you're seeing shown in both the turning diagram movement and on the plan set. And additionally, as you look at their turning movement diagram, that is a WB67. That is a 67-foot-long tractor trailer, wheelbase 67. That turning movement would essentially, if you're driving a large truck or if you've drove anything with the trailer behind it, you swing out to make that motion. With the addition of the turning lane that they added to Mason Road, the trucks would only have to slow down a few miles an hour to actually make that turn. So other than potential conflicts that would arise in that center turn lane, they wouldn't actually be crossing into another traffic lane.
Thank you, sir. That explanation...
I'd just like to point out that from the drawings that we have in front of us, the dimension of the road is exactly the same.
That is correct. The roadway dimensions never changed.
But I'm referring to the bottleneck we're going to have of turning off Mason Road and then some traffic wanting, the tractor trailers want to go down into proposed Building 4 as well as the next two proposed buildings, and other trucking want to turn left and park in the front of the building.
Do we have any other comments or questions in regards to this, everybody?
Yeah, I would just like to say again, Secretary Coats, we would be glad to make that throat wider, to make it even more, make the situation better and easier for the trucks to turn in, if that, if that helps ease your fears and concerns about the turning movement. We can take it to a 22 or 24-foot receiving lane on there. Adding the right-hand D cell turn lane just causes the tear-up infrastructure that we're putting in right now. And the, and the traffic study that was done previously just said it wasn't needed, it wasn't required due to the number of through movements. So again, we have 20-foot in that receiving lane plus two 15-foot lanes for a left and then a right and a straight, so that's 30 and 20, that's 50. And then we could make that another two or four feet wider if that would help.
Well, I think it would help. For the citizens of Laverne, I definitely think it would help to get the tractor trailers off the, off Mason Road as more responsive. I mean, that's all I'd say.
And we want this to be a successful development for the city of Laverne and for our client, so we don't want any issues out there. We had roughly 55 through trips in the AM peak hour in non-right-hand turns. In the PMP, there were 202 trips and four right-hand turns projected at future build-out of the entire park, which was, you know, roughly 1.3 million square feet for the entire park.
Very good. What was peak hours?
202.
In the, in the PMP, it was 202, projected northbound, and four right-hand turn lanes into this specific driveway, which is noted as driveway number 6 in the traffic impact study dated October 2017.
Very good. Since the extra width is not on the plans, can we add it, sir? You kind of put me up against the wall here, Mr. Coats.
Well, I'd like to get a set dimension set up here so, so we know the staff can work with it later date. I mean, at the moment, we've got, you know, different numbers thrown out. I'd like to get specific numbers and then I'll work...
Let's get a specific number worked out on the width of the mouth.
Okay, right now, it's roughly 50 feet. So would you like to take that to 54 feet?
You have it, and that doesn't impair you too much, 54 feet?
I think that we will make it work.
Very good. With the 54-foot dimension on that mouth and that entrance, I will entertain a motion at this point.
Make the motion to accept with the 54-feet width and the drawing as presented.
Graham, just for the record, be specific as to what part of the plan that you're looking at.
So this unnamed road, yeah?
It's driveway number 6 according to the study.
So driveway number 6, the width will be 54 feet.
Total.
Total.
All right. We have a motion to accept or submitted with a driveway width, driveway number 6 at 54 feet. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item. Site plan requested by Dean Design Group LLC for A+ Storage. Phase 2, property located on New Paul Road, tax map 017, parcel 34, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by A+ Storage of Tennessee LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This site plan is for A+ Storage located on New Paul Road and is actually, came about because when it was approved a couple of years ago, this part of the site was slated to be individual buildings and, and not one large building. And later on, the applicant wished to change that to one large building, which required it trip back to planning commission. So before we deny it, is this set of buildings, or excuse me, set of units in one big building that is to the west of the existing buildings? And here's some pictures of the existing site. The required sidewalk was installed initially with the first building, so it is in place and extends the entire frontage. You can see pictures of the sidewalk here. This is a lower area that drops off. It's kind of like a, I guess you might say a pit from some vantage points, but that area was graded out in the beginning and, and reserved for the future buildings. So that's where this building would be built. And you see the retaining wall off here to the north and west that was also put in. And there's another view of the same area.
Right here, seven.
And then this is the office, and you can see the design of it. And there's no sign, no signs installed as of yet. And the building that they're requesting to build is 50,700 square feet. And the office, which is already built, is 1,050 square feet. And there are seven existing car parks on the site for customers, including accessible ADA space, spaces. And it is in the Waldron Road overlay district, so additional architectural standards apply, and they have submitted elevations which are included in your packets. And there's no other outstanding technical comments. So that's all for the report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments in regards to this project from the board?
Do, Mr. Chairman, one for the engineer. Did number 3 on the technical items get addressed to satisfaction on sheet 3.0? Doesn't look like it's changed much.
Yes, all technical items have been addressed to our satisfaction.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? May we see the materials board since I see you have it on hand? Different project. I'll take it. More of a formality, but if you would state your name and address for the record, gentlemen.
I'm Charles Dean, Dean Design Group.
Thank you.
Joe Harp, A+ Storage.
Thank you, gentlemen. And this project is going to mirror what's already...
Exact materials. Yes, sir.
Very good.
First four buildings. We're just using exact same buildings.
Any questions or comments for the applicant?
Did you bring that forward, Mr. Coats?
Yeah.
A little wrinkle here. Is this first coat? First coat of asphalt?
Joe, is this our first coat of asphalt?
Okay, so there will be a smooth layer on top of everything once everything's finished out?
Okay.
Mr. Coats, I believe you had any questions?
Just one other question. Is there any additional signage we talked about? There's been lots of people come in, have their package, and then they come back a few months later, they want to do additional signage? Or are we, what was presented is what we're going to get?
That is correct. Yeah, what has been presented to date is what you're going to get. We don't, we're not requesting any additional signs at this time.
Thank you.
So basically, everything is going off of your office building?
I'm sorry...
Because it looks, everything's going to be like the office building because everything, I mean, you're...
Yeah, in terms of materials and color scheme, that's correct. Yep.
Well, there's three existing storage buildings already constructed. This is just fourth one, exactly like the first three.
So we're, we're all, can you go back to the shot where they got all the buildings? Or the three existing ones, rather? Help me orient myself with the, which foot side is the overlay going to be coming from? Do they have to do all the buildings or is it just the one out front? Or is it just foot? What are we doing for the overlay?
It's my understanding that it, that the overlay goes along the front of this property, but not all the way to the back.
Yes.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought. That's what I was trying to get. Okay.
But I believe they made the buildings match all the way around, so you didn't change anything. You just left it with the same overlay standards throughout?
Haven't changed anything from what you've previously approved.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept with the, accept with the materials and as submitted.
We have a motion to accept or submitted with materials. We have a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item. Site plan 5486 Murfreesboro Road, Lot 3, requested by Jim Lukens, property located at 5486 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 018B, group E, parcel 5, C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Jay Sharifi. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this applicant is refurbishing an existing building. You can see here in the photo, they are at 5486 Murfreesboro Road, and they're zoned C2. This is the building that, that sits out there today, and they are proposing to do quite a bit of exterior work and to bring it up and make the building look a lot more appealing. There's some more shots of the building. This building today is 4,180 square feet, so almost 4,200. And a few, I think it was two months ago, Lot 4, which is next door to this site, was approved for retail building. So you can see in the architectural elevations that they're matching Lot 4. So this is Lot 4. And now tonight's request is for Lot 3 in this building. So they're going to rehab that building, and they did come to the board's earning appeals on July the 10th, and it was decided at that meeting that they would be allowed the use of auto-service but not auto-repair. So that is the, the use that's listed on your site plan and that they're requesting is auto-service. So there is a distinction there. And they have submitted materials board. I think the other required elevations are here. And the, all of the notes have been addressed. Most of these had to do with the Murfreesboro Road overlay district, but they would have to increase this building by more than 50% for any of that to apply, so none of it applies. And the driveway aprons comment can come off. And I think what may be left, I'll let Mr. Leach speak to engineering.
All the engineering technical items were addressed for this particular site.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions or comments for staff from the board?
Just get the applicant to understand that they are doing the same colors, and I just want to make sure we all agree with that, the same colors and going to match up with the other building.
Can you present us the materials board and state your name and address for the record, sir?
Just like we had on that Lot 4, we're using the same stone on columns, all these vertical columns up here on the side to match the building next door. Then we're using the two-tone colors of a sturdy brown across the bottom, good heavy brown, earth tones on top, and then medium bronze metal everywhere. So all the bigger, this will be the front of the building, and a few doors on here, and then service side, and then this is just the side that's on the proper line. We will probably reduce the size of these windows for energy purposes. These were formerly old overhead doors. We're just going to scan that whole building and put a whole new shell around. We're just going to take all the metal off, re-sign with that, and salvage the structure and build new building.
That answered my question, because I didn't see that building looking like that.
Well...
Okay, you just answered my question.
I look forward to see.
And then all the side finishes and everything that's not stone is ethos and...
Little design to it.
Yeah, it's got a little, little look to it, and then when we work with your signage people on a budget level, the signage we can have, and we'll coordinate that with the sign committee.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board?
May I get his name for the...
Name and...
Jerry Curtis on the architect.
Thank you. And what, your address?
204 Green Valley Boulevard, Franklin, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You want these back, right? I'll keep them.
Yes. No further questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion on this item.
Make a motion to accept or submitted.
Motion to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item. Final plat of portion of Lot 2, Ritter Properties, requested by Isaac Okiri Ba, property located on Hollenridge, Hollenridge Road near Sand Hill, tax map 14, parcel 104, I-1 light industrial zoning district, property owned by William Villanueva. Here you go. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This portion of land is located on Hollendale Road near Sand Hill, and this does constitute two lots on roughly three acres of land. And, or excuse me, an acre and a half roughly, not three. Each lot together equals 1.5 acres. One of the comments from the workshop was to include the minimum building setback lines on the plat. They have done that. They also had an outdated FEMA flood note, and that has been corrected. The six-foot sidewalks are now shown on the plat, and that has been corrected. And the misspellings have been removed, and the purpose note has been added. And so that takes care of all of the comments from the workshop, and there were just a couple engineering comments, so I will let Mr. Leach speak to those. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board, all engineering comments were addressed.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments? Well...
With everything been addressed, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept or submitted.
We have a motion to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Preliminary plat requested by Huddleston Steel for Ponderosa Estates, section 2, tax map 006, parcel 28, property located south of Martin Lane, R1 low-density residential zoning district, property owned by David V. Waldron. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This piece of land is located in the north and east part of Laverne and is currently zoned R1, along with most everything else out there. It's a huge area of R1. And at the workshop, this was submitted as a preliminary plan, and the ordinance requires first a concept plan, so they have gone back and submitted a concept plan, and it is in your packets tonight. in your packets tonight. And again, this is for single-family development, all single-family homes, and no townhomes, no multifamily. Property's located south of Martin Lane, and in this layout, they're proposing 42 single-family lots. They range in width from 40 feet on the cul-de-sac to about 50 feet elsewhere. There are several lots included on their plat that are 100 feet wide. And this development is not located in any floodplain, and I think, let's see, they do show sidewalks on both sides of the street, that was a comment from the workshop, so that's been fixed. The vicinity map and the surrounding zoning have also been fixed, and we have discussed the restrictive covenants on the telephone, and they did submit a copy of that to me as well. So, that's all the planning comments, so there's none outstanding. Thank you.
All engineering comments were addressed. When they changed from a concept plan, my comments were no longer valid, so...
So, we're still addressing this as a concept plan?
It is a concept plan.
Okay.
That's what the board will be voting on, and you should probably, when you phrase the vote, include it as approve the concept plan.
Thank you, sir. Quick question. Did I hear you say that some of these lots were as small as 40?
On the cul-de-sacs, yes.
The road frontage?
The road frontage is 40, and they go back in a pi shape, which is typical for a cul-de-sac.
I thought the only, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, I thought the only 40-foot frontage we had was in an R3.
The only, I couldn't hear.
Single-family dwelling. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the only 40-foot road frontage we had was in an R3 under single-family dwelling, or does that apply to R1 as well?
I think on a cul-de-sac, I think typically they go down to 35 feet. They do in most areas.
Let's let Mr. Coates check real quick. I don't mind being wrong, I just want to get it right. Yes, sir. R1, correct?
Yes, R1.
From what I see, the lot has to be 100-foot wide at the setback line.
So, would, would it work?
I don't know what it is at the setback. The setbacks are 40 feet, 40-foot front setback, so 40-foot back is a lot 100-foot wide. Or is this R1 or R2?
R1.
R1, yes, 100-foot.
100-foot setback line, yeah.
Mr. Steele? Name and address for the record real quick, sir, and just correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We understand the requirement for 100 feet of width at the setback line. On this concept, there are a few lots that may be a little shy of that, but we can correct that before we bring the preliminary plat back to you.
Okay. Is that acceptable across the board, or do we want to do it now? Staff is saying yes.
Yeah, my other comment would be is, historically, on the square footage, we want to show what building can go on there. At the moment, it's just the way it's laid out, the way it's showed up, it's just showing the total square foot but not showing the setback lines neither. So, I want to make sure that if it gets approved, or when it gets approved, that you can actually build a house on that property without infringing on the regulations.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're on the same page, and we'll proceed forward at this point.
Thank you.
And any other questions or comments for Mr. Steele? What's your address, Mr. Steele?
I need a name and address, please.
Name and address, sir, real quick.
Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel Engineering, 2115 Northwest Broad, Murfreesboro.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the last planned preliminary plat, which is a concept plan and approve as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted the concept plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I believe that is our last item, so bonds and letters of credits. Mr. Leach.
Mr. Chairman, board, in back your packets, you'll find our current bonds list. The only things of note is that we've added several maintenance bonds as the city has accepted subdivisions recently. Some older bonds that had not went into maintenance were just released because we had held the bond past their one-year maintenance period, the full bond amount. So, the bond list got cleaned up a little bit, so really all that I'm saying. Only thing that will be new is Brookside Phase 2. Their bond was accepted and passed, I believe, last month, so they'll actually be going and starting pulling permits, so there'll be 80 new, 88 new lots coming in.
Very good. Thank you very much, everyone. Meeting adjourned.